I'd like to call the order this meeting of the PBD City Council. This meeting is being televised on cable channel nine and is being taped by PBD Access TV and is also being recorded by our city council stenographer. Before we jump into the agenda, councilors, just very quickly, because I've had a number of questions about the 40B application that was received recently by the city for Oak Street, and there is some time sensitivity to it, so I just wanted to draw your attention to some communications that you received. You've received by email a link to the application and the supporting details, and you've also been made aware of a meeting that is going to take place at Farm Ave. on December 13th at 2:00 PM. The city and other interested parties have 30 days to comment to mass housing on this application, so that deadline is December 22nd. So the purpose of the December 13th meeting is to hear a presentation from the developer and to gather comments. So if you could please be aware of this meeting, again, you've gotten notification of this by email, and if you could attend, that would be great. Yes, Councilman Manning-Martin? December 13th.
At 2:00 PM?
At 2:00 PM. That's -- it's a --
It's a --
Yeah, the normal time slot for the construction review meeting, so they're using that time slot because they normally would bring the department heads and other --
Right, but if they truly want city councilors present, which I would like to be present, it should really be done not Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, so that we can attend, because we all have jobs. So I would request that it be moved to a time that the councilors could attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Manning-Martin. Just a reminder that that process doesn't ultimately end up before the city council, but I hear your input, and I absolutely think that it will be --
I understand that, but the whole purpose of you announcing it tonight is to generate some interest and participation from the council, so I'd like to be there, and if it could be scheduled at a time where others could attend, other councils could attend, I will be there. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor, and I'll pass that along to those that are scheduling the meeting. Thank you very much. So onto the agenda. Item A, and again, this is a revised agenda; there was a typo on the original, so we're looking at one that was distributed on November 28th. And item A is the tax classification hearing. Would the clerk please read the notice of public hearing?
Notice to see about given that the city council of the city PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, December 1st, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the Frank Lloyd Wagon Auditorium, City Hall, 24 laws to PBD Mass. in accordance with chapter 797 of the Acts in 1979 as amended of the Massachusetts General Laws in order to adopt the percentages of the local tax levied to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2017. PBD City Council Councillor Peter M. McGinn, City Council President.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, council. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to discuss the state of our city's finances and to propose our 2017 tax rate classification. This is a very challenging time of year for our financial team, and I want to deeply thank Mike Ingris, Mary Martin, Sue Antonellis, Leslie George, Brian Barrett, and all the staff for their hard work in assisting with the preparation for tonight's presentation. Mike Ingris will provide a more detailed presentation to you, however, I did want to give a brief overview of what is coming. Tonight, I'm very happy to report on our city's financial condition. You may recall this past June, at our budget presentation, we projected a $140 increase to our average residential tax bill. This projection was based on some significant increases to a number of items. First was our city's pension retirement obligation, which increased this past year by $350,000; $3.5 million increase to fund our contractual settlements, which included a large investment, as I'm sure you'll remember, in the increased staffing for our PBD fire department; and an increase of $777,000 for the additional students attending the Essex Tech Regional Volk. And I expect that there will be one more significant increase in our numbers at the Essex Tech Regional Volk before it consistently, I think, stays around that same level. The other major factor in that June projection was a $628,000 increase to our debt service, and that's primarily because of the Higgins Middle School. We together, city council and city hall, have formed a terrific partnership and have been able to undertake a great number of noteworthy projects to improve our city and make PBD a more desirable place to live, work, and raise a family. Together, we have invested in education. Our new state-of-the-art Higgins Middle School opened in September to rave reviews. It's just wonderful to be able to see the students exploring and studying and using the technology upgrades that are significant, the science labs, the culinary arts programs, and the performing arts, the theater, which to me is just spectacular. We also have hundreds of our students are receiving a top-rate vocational training at our new regional vocational school. This year, the McCarthy Elementary School underwent a major renovation with a new roof and windows, which will result in significant savings, we believe, in energy costs. PBD's High School, as I'm sure you remember, has a new athletic complex and a new student health center, with plans this coming summer for major improvements that have already been funded for our high school auditorium and gymnasium, as well as a significant project for a new roof at the PBD High School. Our investment in education has helped provide our students with the very latest and 21st century learning technology. It's wonderful to be able to say that every student now, from 6th grade to 9th grade, is equipped with a Chromebook, and that'll only continue next year, it'll be 6th through 10th, the year after it'll be 6th through 11th, and then the following year it'll be 6th through 12. We'll have individual Chromebook. And every 4th and 5th grade classroom, which I'm just as excited about, every elementary school 4th and 5th grade classroom in our city has a Chromebook cart. Together, we have invested in public safety. Last year, as you remember, we added our new Engine One ladder truck, which is now in full operation. Every firefighter now has a new and improved self-contained breathing apparatus that provides them with 15 minutes of additional oxygen in case of fire emergency, and this year, we added additional firefighters to the ranks to ensure that each of our fire stations, our five fire stations, have a minimum of three firefighters at all times, including one ranking officer at all times. Together, we have invested to improve the quality of life for PBD residents. The second Mass Works downtown project is complete and has made PBD Square safer for pedestrians and drivers alike. Most importantly, our square has undergone a much-needed facelift, improving our appearance and making the entire area more attractive to developers. The council's support of both Mass Works projects was crucial to their success, and we all deserve great credit. The scouting way retention basin for a third year is working properly and holding back millions of gallons of water that previously flowed to our downtown. Our flooding issues are not by any means over, but certainly there is a significant improvement in our city's handling of water. Our South PBD Nature Trail and conservation area is fully complete, opening up 300 acres of city land, abutting Sid's Pond and Springs Pond, to walkers, joggers, and cyclists. And thanks to your support, the long-awaited Crystal Lake restoration and beautification project is underway, whereby 50,000 cubic yards of sediment will be removed from the lake basin to restore the water to its natural luster, and exciting new amenities will be added to the area, making it an inviting place for PBD families and nature lovers. And that is just a few highlights of the many projects we have undertaken together, real projects that are producing real results. I'm pleased to report that we have met those June projections and, in some cases, slightly exceeded them, where we have been able to slightly lower the average tax increase from $140 to $137. So where are we? I will highlight a couple of important topics, and then Mike will get into much more of the details. For the third year in a row, our average residential home value has increased. In June, we projected a 5% increase. The actual increase for this year is 5.3%. In 2015, we were 5.5%, in 2016, 6.7%, and then this year, 5.3%. That's an average increase in our residential values over the last three years, total of 18.5%. Now certainly some of that can be attributed to improved conditions in the economy as a whole, but make no mistake, our collective efforts with the investments I've outlined earlier continue to make PBD a desirable place to live and one of the hottest real estate markets in Massachusetts. To illustrate, part of our June projections included a $714,000 increase in new tax dollars due to new growth. But our new growth, particularly in the commercial sector, was better than expected and provided new tax dollars totaling $1,045,000. That's 330,000 above our projections, or 46%. I proposed this year, as I did last year, our CIP factor went up from 162 to 165. This year, I am again proposing an increase to our CIP factor to 168 to create a more balanced tax bill and reduce some of the burden on our residential homeowners. Additionally, we have committed a total of nearly $2.1 million out of our reserves. You may recall, in 2015, we took out $1 million. Last year, we bumped it up to $2.6 million after some strong advocacy from the council, and I was very comfortable moving forward with that number. This year, I propose to take out $2.1 million, and I'll touch on a couple of reasons why. We do have some concern moving forward, and I anticipate that I'll be coming to the council later this winter or early spring. Two items of concern in the budget. First is fire overtime, and police overtime, but to a lesser extent. We have eight firefighters right now that are out on significant injuries or significant illnesses, and they've been out the greater part, if not the whole year. It's caused a significant increase in our firefighter overtime line item. I expect that I will be coming to you for a request out of free cash to assist in that line item. And also special education costs. Special education costs continue to rise, and it's something that the school department is wrestling with, and I anticipate that that'll be another item that I come forward on for assistance with special education costs for the school department. With our investment in quality of life and the continued delivery of core municipal services that residents have come to expect, we are still among the very lowest residential tax bills in Essex County. In fact, we have the lowest tax bill of any city in Essex County. As you can see in the chart that you'll see shortly, that was in the packet, compared to our neighboring communities, Salem average is $1,000 over City of PBD. Danvers is $1,500. Beverly is $2,000. Middleton is $3,000, and Linfield is $4,000 over the City of PBD, and I contend that that gap is only increasing. You may have seen in the paper last week, Town of Danvers, their taxes are going up averaged $205. And we, as opposed to many other cities and towns, do not have a trash pickup fee. In closing, I want to thank the city council for being outstanding partners with my administration. It's never easy to vote for a tax increase, but I truly believe that we are investing appropriately and conscientiously in PBD's future. Our investments in education, public safety, and quality of life continue to pay dividends, and we've done it without compromising the affordability that has long been PBD's calling card in achieving the status of the city with the lowest tax bill on the North Shore. Together, we are moving PBD in the right direction, and I ask for your support on tonight's votes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ingris?
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to go through the handout that was in the packet. Values increased this year by $287.9 million, or 4.3% overall. As the mayor alluded to you earlier, the residential went up 5.3%, and the other significant increase was personal property, which went up 6.5%, and that was 111 new business additions in addition to increases in existing personal property accounts. For an overall increase of 4.3%. The next slide is an analysis of the residential values, which increased $279.2 million, and again, 5.3% in different areas. Single-family homes, 5.2%. Condominiums, 4%. Two- and three-families at 6.2%, and multifamilies at 8.2%. Vacant land went down a little bit, and other at 1.1%. Other --
What was that, Susan? The other?
Oh, yeah, mobile home parks and --
Other residential properties?
And mixed-use properties, right. Next slide shows the commercial-industrial personal property values. Increased to $8.6 million, or 0.58%, so we have a stable CIP with some fluctuations between classes. The commercial class is 75.7% of the total. Industrial is 16.4% of the total, and personal property is 7.9% of the total CIP. The average residential value has increased this year, $16,100. It's up to $340,100 from $324,000 the previous year. Since 2014, residential values, the average home value, has increased $52,400. That's 18% over the past three years. It shows the strong market conditions continue. Again, commercial property values increased, on average, $3,000. You can see by the chart that it's been very stable over the course of time, and over the past three years, it's increased 4.6%. The mayor talked earlier about our new growth. This is new tax dollars added to the tax rolls. And as of January 1, the new growth came in at $1,045,000, with 72% coming from commercial industrial and 28% from residential. It's a little better than we expected, but slightly below our average. If you look at the bottom line, the average would have been $1.1 million. The next chart shows our budget. We went up this year $3.6 million, or 2.26%. The operating budget of $155 million, the North Shore Essex Tech of $3.4 million, state and county assessments at $2.8 million, and allowance for abatements of $1.2 million. The total amount to be raised was $163 million. The funding sources, as we propose, are property taxes of $101,762,940, local receipts of $32,590,000, state aid at $27,380,000, and, as the mayor said, available resources at The next slide is the look at local receipts. The second column from the right, the actual 2016, is what came in as of June 30th. We mirrored to the right what was projected for the 2017 budget. According to the Department of Revenue, when we're going to do our tax rate, we can't exceed the prior year's numbers, and for the most part, I mirrored all the way down. Motor excise at 7.1, hotel taxes at 1.7, et cetera. When we get to water and sewer, we used a 5% increase based on the raise of rates that we did in August. So those come in at 5.8 and 9.8. Moving down the page a little bit more, our Medicaid reimbursements, we reduced some because we haven't received any payments yet. They're in process, the school department's in process of sending things out. I'm not sure where that's going to come in. SESD is the actual amount that we had at the district as of June 30th. And our debt service is CPC vote that we're going to be asking for tonight for $240,000. And our billboard revenues have decreased because we're billing a single year, and last year, we had a double payment from one of the vendors. State aid fortunately increased for us $820,000 this year, $513,000 for education, $286,000 for local government. Tonight, we're proposing the tax classification factor of 168%. And this slide shows you the before and after. Before classification, the residential values make up 78.5% of the total levy, or 79.8 million, and the commercial would be 21.5% or 21.9 million of the total $101 million With the 168% shift, the residential responsibility moves down to $64.9 million, and the commercial moves up to $36.8 million. The shift is $14.9 million from residential to commercial. What does this mean for a tax bill? If everyone, residents, were taxed at an equalized rate, they'd be paying $4,918. With this shift, the tax bill, on average, is $3,999, a reduction of $919 for a residential tax bill. For CIP, the opposite, they get shifted, on average, instead of being $20,627, it goes up to $34,650 for an increase of $14,000. Over the years, we've tried to maintain a consistent amount, and you can see the levy shift from 2012 to 2017 is in that 14, 14.5% range. This year, it's 14.7. The recommended tax rates for this year are $11.76 for residential, $24.29 for commercial. If you look at our tax rate history, from low to high for residents, the change has been 64 cents, and for commercial, the low to high change has been $1.3. And that's pretty much depicted in the chart where it's a flat line, pretty much going all the way across. The homeowner's annual tax bill this year will increase, on average, $137.29, or 3.5%. It's going to be $3,999.35 at the $11.76 tax rate, with a value of $340,100. The commercial tax bills will increase $215.22. This table shows you a sense that in the last several years, there hasn't been very much escalation. It's been a very stable, steady tax on commercial. This chart shows different strata of where the tax payments are going to fall. 48% of resident tax bills will increase $100 or less. Last year, that was 49%. This year, 70% will pay $200 or less. Last year, it was 69%, so we're in the same range. And for the commercial, approximately 85% will pay $250 or less of an increase. As the mayor alluded to earlier, this is a look at Essex County for 2016, because we don't have the 2017 numbers, they're all doing their tax rates also. And PBD ended up second from the bottom in the list, only Salisbury being just a slight bit lower. And this year, I anticipate we're going to be either at the bottom, very bottom, or one or two from the bottom. In addition to that, our levy capacity has grown to $9 million, just over $9 million. That's the amount of money that we have in tax residents. We've given them a savings over the years. So in summary, the total assessed value of $7,379,990,000. We had an allowable tax levy under Proposition 2.5. So with new growth in Proposition 2.5, we could tax up to $110,787,000. Our recommendation is to tax $101,767,000. That leaves an unreserved levy reserve of the $9,190,000. At a classification factor of 168%, and its residential rate of $11.76, and a commercial rate of $24.29.
Thank you, Mr. Ingris. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in support of this tax classification proposal? Anybody here that would like to speak in support of this tax classification proposal? Is there anybody here this evening that would like to speak in opposition to this tax classification proposal? Anybody here this evening that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none? Counselor Revel.
Thank you. Mike, could you fill us in on what's the status of the reserves if we go ahead and transfer the $2 million?
We just had free cash certified at $14.1 million, and we're looking to vote 1.5 million out of that, so that would leave us with $12.6 million in free cash. And we have 1.3 million in unreserved capital improvement program, and we're proposing to move $500,000 out of that for the debt service, and that would leave $888,000 in And we have stabilization of $3.6 million.
So $3.6 was a stabilization fund?
Yeah. The total of the three is $19 million.
After using two?
After using is 17.
17 after two. So roughly 10% of the budget, or a little more.
10.7% would be left.
Well, DMB is going to be happy with us then, obviously, which is a good thing. Couple of other issues, again, I, you know, the time to be concerned about the tax rates of the budget, really, not the tax classification hearing, because we've already approved all the FY '17 stuff, but there are a couple of things that interested me. We've been doing a lot of construction, and it looks like the '17 budget has $1,857 million in the projection, because that's not real yet, correct?
What are you looking at?
On the projected local revenues for '17? Page 10?
Yes. Those are projections. They aren't realized, no.
So if we're doing more building, or if there's any indication of any more building, does that number still hold? I know that was the projected number. I know that was the projected number from last year's budget session. We're now almost six months into the budget year. Does it look like that number's coming in light or strong?
I, I took a look at all of the revenues year-to-date, and everything looks like it's tracking according to the, the budgetary numbers. I don't see any real excesses or, or anything that's short, shortfalls. It, it looks pretty good. The, the, actually, motor vehicle looked like it was even coming in a little bit higher, but I don't know if that's just a, a timing difference from when we received some of the payments.
And the, uh, I would just point out, on, on, on page 12, the impact of CIP. One of the reasons why I've, I've constantly, um, hopped on this particular number, and I'm not going to this year, but one of the reasons why I have is because if anybody had any doubt what the impact of bringing businesses into the city is, they merely have to look at this page and understand that, on average, it saves the residential taxpayer, based on what we do with the commercials, a thousand bucks on their, on their tax bill, 919 this year. Even though, while the residentials realize the significant improvement in the valuations of their properties, the total valuation of the commercial properties in the city has remained flat, and in, and in some cases, we'll probably be seeing a decline, because we haven't felt the full impact of vacancies on this particular grouping yet. When they reassess the commercials, if our vacancy rate doesn't remain stable, the valuations of those commercial properties decline, and therefore, it'll take even a higher step-up factor to equal the same amount of dollars that are being contributed, which is, is kind of unfortunate for those who are succeeding in business here, because they'll be bearing the burden of the vacancies. So, I, I think as a, as a council, we need to do everything possible to make Peabody an attractive business location to keep our residential rate stable. If for no other reason, to keep it stable, which is why we have to make sure our zoning and all of our policies somehow reflect that. And we can't be, uh, considered to be, you know, commercial, commercially, um, not viable or less viable. So, I just, just wanted to point that out for, there's several new counselors here. And again, I, I, the other thing, on page 14, looking at the, so, we've got one of those interesting things where, and it's confusing, I think, to the residents, where we have a decrease in the rate per thousand at the same time that they have a tax increase, but it's driven principally by the value of their property in the market as assessed by us. So, um, it's, it's a little bit of an interesting conundrum. And would you happen to know, on page 16, for the, the CIPs, I noted there, there are nine who will have more than $10,000 in increase. Do we happen to know who those nine are, or what, or what they are?
Well, we do, we do know, but I'd have to go and, and get that information.
Yeah, I, I, I'd be kinda curious to see who those are, because, um, you know, we know that we've got a problem at the mall with vacancy. And if they're one of them, I, you know, they would be hard-pressed not to come back here and look for an abatement. And, you know, commercials do have a little bit of power that the, that the residentials don't have, is they can hire a, an attorney to come in and request a revaluation, because there's a little voodoo in that number. And, you know, and challenge what they're actually being charged. And I know the vacancy rate at the mall is increasing, not decreasing. So, that could be a big hit to our tax rate going forward in the future. Again, another reason why we need to promote as much as possible to keep businesses here and keep those places occupied and get people to shop there, um, just as we do with the downtown and in the parks, so. Other than that, I, I don't have any questions. I'm glad to see that we're using at least, uh, the $2 million in the reserve. I know you and I are gonna be meeting in the future on pocketing some of the reserves into segregated markets so that we can turn around and say, okay, we have a certain amount of the reserve will go to debt, a certain amount will go to capital, et cetera. So, I look forward to that, and thank you very much for the presentation. It's nice to still be at the lower end of the tax chart. Two from the bottom is a pretty good place to be.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, um, I guess the question, Mike, is on the CIP, just to follow up on, on Counselor Grevell's comments. We're creeping up a little bit, as far as that number. And I'm just trying to find out how comfortable you are, and looking forward over the next couple of years, what you anticipate, uh, as far as that goes. I mean, it's an okay number, but I, if we keep going, we may have problems trying to attract businesses into some of those vacancies we're, we're trying to fill. So, just your comments on that would be appreciated.
I agree with you. We, we have to watch it. I anticipate we will be increasing, because residential values continue to increase. So, for the next tax classification hearing, I would project that this will go up some.
And if I could, Mr. President, just to add to that, because the first three years as mayor, 2012, 2013, 2014, we kept that very stable, the CIP factor. In fact, we did shift it slightly, I believe it was a half percentage point, to the residential side, because value, home values were stable. But because the home values have increased, as we had mentioned, 18%, um, we felt that it was appropriate to kind of shift that burden off of residential more into commercial. But that could swing back. I anticipate next year, we probably will be doing the same thing, probably another shift a little bit towards the commercial. Historically, that's how it's gone, uh, for the city over the last, uh, couple of decades. Typically, when home values are stable, it shifted a little bit to residential. When home values are going up, it shifted towards the commercial.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. And, um, just to add a point of clarification to that, Mr. Gingrich, perhaps for some of the new counselors, that number has a natural ceiling, right? We can't go above 1, 1.75, right?
1.75.
So, 1.75 is the max, and we're at 1.68, so. Counsel Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation, Mayor and Mike. Mike, can you tell me, did, it was only $70,000 increase in the payment in lieu of taxes category, but did, was there a program we put in place to get that? That's my pet peeve, that we, we just almost rely on them to, to be good neighbors and send it in? Or do we actually go out and try to recruit and solicit that cash?
Yeah, last year, we were able to get the Harvard Pilgrim onboard, and that, that's what that increase is. Right now, it's about $350,000 in pilots outside of electric light. And then combine that with electric light, it's about $800,000.
Do, do, how do other municipalities, do, do they do better than us? Do they, is it all, and, we're on, we're in the same ballpark? Do you know?
I'd have to look. I, I don't know.
Because we have quite a few.
Number, and a number of those, and it is kind of a, a delicate, um, dance with, with the different companies. For example, both Harvard and Leahy contribute money to the school-based health center at Peabody High School. So, a large number, a large amount of money, they just go directly to the high school rather than money that comes to the city. So, you know, when we sit down and negotiate and try to discuss these topics, and when, when issues like the school-based health center come up, is a negotiation to try to get not only tax revenue, but also, um, or maybe in lieu of, maybe donations or resources to some of the areas of need for the city. And certainly, the student-based health center, which has been a tremendous success, has been helped tremendously by Harvard, excuse me, by Boston Children's, not Harvard, Boston Children's and Leahy. That's money that they're investing in our city, not just money, but resources, staff, access to some of their equipment that we're able to get to. And it's difficult to put a price on some of that as well.
Thank you. All set. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gould. Other counselors. Uh, Counsel Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page 16, where you go through the analysis of the 2017 changes in tax bills, although, as we know, um, the average increase is gonna be, would you say, $137, $138 per home, um, there's, you know, it, we still need to point out that there are 400, excuse me, 4,581 people that'll be paying between, their increase will be between 200 and 250. And there's 2,834 people who will be experiencing an increase of 250 to $500. And there's 457 people, homes, rather, that'll be increased between 500 to $1,000. And then there's 92 residents that are going to be experiencing between $1,000 and $5,000 increases. And, um, there's even 10 homes that are gonna be increased between $5,000 and $10,000. So, that's a lot of money. So, we will be hearing from those folks. That is a lot of money. And if the valuations are, of home valuations, it's good news that they're back, you know, inflation not taken into account, they're back to what the values were back in 2006. So, the home values are back after the bubble burst. So, that's good news, but it's not great news for the folks who's, who are going to get hit pretty hard here, because their home values have increased significantly. So, if our valuations have gone up 18.5% over the last three years, that's good news. But people's salaries haven't increased 18.5% over the last three years. So, salaries have not kept up with the home valuations that are getting back to where they were in 2006. So, yes, $137 on average doesn't sound like a lot of money, but there are a lot of people here that are going to get whacked and whacked pretty hard. And, you know, we do have seniors that are on fixed income, so their salaries aren't increasing at all. And then we have folks whose salaries have not increased at the rate that our home values have, have regained their value. So, um, I think we're, my phone will be ringing off the hook with, from the increases to the degree that a lot of these folks are going to have. And I think some of the councils actually are probably going to get whacked a little bit in their, their, um, taxes as well, due to the home valuation. And, uh, you know, just, I just wanted to put that out there, and it's not really just about $137. It's, we have a whole bunch of citizens out there in different financial straits, and it really runs the gamut. So, I just wanted to have that aired and said. And through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor, you mentioned sped costs, and you're looking to come to the council for, was it free cash for two issues? One was overtime of firing police, and then the other was sped costs you anticipate, correct?
Correct.
And would that be, did they underfund the, under the school department, did they underfund the sped line item, or were there an increase of special education out-of-district students coming in?
I don't have all the details, but my, what I've been told is that we, there were out-of-district students, or placements out-of-district, um, that have increased over what was projected. There has been some students that we've brought back that were out-of-district that are now back in our system. Uh, but there's a couple of, or a few cases, uh, that had to be put out-of-district that are gonna be significant costs.
Thank you. I think that's all I have at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Manning-Martin.
Yes, real briefly, and-
Mr. Mayor.
And Counsel Manning was correct in, in some of her numbers, but I, I did also want to point out a few numbers, that 3,409 of our residents are gonna actually be getting a tax decrease. 5,248 of our residents will be getting a, be a tax increase of $50 or less. And 7,324 of our residents will be getting a tax increase of $100 or less. So, I think that's kind of where there is a balance, depending year-to-year. Home values are where they stand year-to-year. But certainly, I think all of us are cognizant of the fact that 137 is an average number, that there will be people paying more, but there's going to be also people paying a lot less. And I just wanted to make sure that that was pointed out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Chirco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, I just had one question. I had asked this last year, but it's regarding uncollected debt, um, uncollected taxes, I should say. Last year, it was LL Fine and 60 Pulaski, and I think it was a building on Washington Street, if I'm not mistaken, that had accumulated up to 2.5 million and, with interest and fines. Have we done anything to collect on any of that, that money?
There, there are a number of parcels that, that went in particular. It's in land court right now.
Okay. Do we have any indication on, on how long? Because if I remember, when I first took office last year, these same properties were still there. I, I don't know, you know, it may just be, that's the case, it takes years, but do we have an indication?
It does take some time, and, and we're talking about moving on those, aren't we?
Yeah, two, those, two of the, the two you referenced, and I think there was another one you referenced, but the two in particular that you referenced, the Fine Building, 143 Linfield Street, and then 60 Pulaski Street are the two most frustrating properties that I can think of in the city. Both of them are right now are in land court, um, at different stages of land court. And, uh, decisions are gonna have to be made in terms of, uh, the direction we wanna take. Right now, 60 Pulaski, 60 Pulaski Street, we're going through environmental testing at that property. Uh, so, there's been no money exchanged hands. We're moving forward with the land court claim, and it's right now in phase two, or we're gonna be, um, moving forward towards phase-two testing. Uh, as to 143 Linfield Street, another very frustrating property. I know, Counsel, it's, it's one, you know, particularly close to you. There is DEP involvement, and that slowed things down, but it is in land court right now, proceeding in a direction. It's just unfortunate that the court system is slow, and land court in particular. And I'm hoping that next year won't be the same thing, but I can tell you it won't be.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Counsel Chirco. Counsel Sasslaw.
Thank you. Um, just wanted to turn to page 10 on projected local revenues. I just, could you, Mike, can you just refresh me? You probably answered this last year, but I have to go back to it. Premium on bonds, can you just explain that to me again, please? That's obviously we're losing 1.3 million.
Yeah, with, with the, um, Higgins School in particular.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Uh, I'm sorry. With the Higgins School in particular, we've been issuing every March. Last March, we issued $15 million in bonds. And part of that was, they gave us a premium, and that was the 1.3 million. But we can't use that as an estimate going forward, because it all depends on how much we bond any particular year. I'm anticipating that we were gonna do either 10 or 15 million this March, and we will get some. And that's what helps us replenish our free cash, and also part of what, um, Mr. Grevell alluded to in terms of when we replenish our free cash, that we can take this and set it aside for debt service, because this money was derived and driven from the issue of debt.
Okay, thank you. And, and I will say, I did look at the top three line items, and I heard what you said, that according to the state parameters, you cannot, um, project a higher amount in there a year before. But, but I'm the optimist. I, I know I look at, um, what we have coming for events, the senior, uh, the senior open, the hotel taxes, the meal taxes, and even if you look at the earnings of some of the car manufacturers, I- taxes, and even if you look at the earnings of some of the car manufacturers, I, I do think that we're in a good spot in that. And I, and I would expect those revenues to increase. And I think that's, for the reasons I, I, I just said, and that's a good thing. I do want to address that and point that out. The only question, and I know it's always, I'm gonna beat you this year, Councilman McGinn, to the punch, but the landfill, I just gotta ask you. It's, it's just, I know we always had a, a real thought that maybe we're gonna be making some money. And I know we're making a little bit more than last year, but maybe, I know there was a problem with the process and drying it out, and it took longer. And just if you can update us on where we stand with the landfill. And is this something that we ever think that maybe we can get in the six figures, or is this where we're gonna be?
Well, as you pointed out, we're starting to get more. And they, and they had been doing some more work. And I think now they've, they've slowed down for the winter. But I, the mayor might know a little bit more about. I, I don't know the numbers.
Yeah, Councilor, that's a great question. Covanta, the operation is in a better spot than it was a year ago when they had their issues. They had to put in dryers because the, the, what the muck that they were taking out was just too wet, and it was causing some operational issues. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. There is some revenue coming in. It's not significant. You know, I don't think it's where they want to be, and it's not where we would like them to be. But one thing I can mention in terms of the landfill, which was good news, and it was spurred on by Crystal Lake, was we were able to get the authorization to operate Crystal Lake as a landfill. Right now, it's for purposes of Crystal Lake, the project itself. And we're gonna be able to save significant money by being able to bring it to our landfill rather than having to truck it to Clinton or Southbridge or some of the other active landfills. We had to go through a significant series of testing and, and permit requirements in order to get that authorization. In fact, it took us over a year to get the authorization to operate. And when Crystal Lake is complete, we then, as a city, will have the option and the possibility of utilizing the landfill to possibly take in certain types of soils from others. That's a decision that we'll have to make going forward, but it could be revenue generated from that. So the, the, the Crystal Lake project has also given us that benefit, not only the cost savings for the project to allow us, I think, to do something spectacular over there, but also gives us the opportunity, if in the future, if we decide to utilize that landfill as a revenue producer.
Thank you.
I hope I didn't, I hope I didn't say that we're gonna use Crystal Lake as a landfill.
That's what I heard. I wanted to make sure that that got straightened out. We're using landfill for the dredging material.
Yes, sediment, the dredge material will be taken from Crystal Lake to the landfill. Yeah, thank you for that correction.
All set, Councilor Saslaw. Thank you, Councilor Saslaw. Other councilors? Seeing none, Councilor Greville.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Do we, do we have to go through these other agenda items if?
Let's take the other agenda items, but can we at least close the public hearing on this item?
Yeah, move to close the public hearing.
Councilors, you heard the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. And as Councilor Greville suggested, we'll take motions at the, towards the end of the meeting so that we can handle that more efficiently. So we're gonna move on to item B. Mr. Gingrich.
This is a request to adopt the real estate exemptions for fiscal 2017 under chapter fifty-nine of Mass General Laws.
Councilor Greville, would you, we need to, we need to receive all these items.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to move to receive item A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and, E, F, and G. Thank you. And I would, go ahead.
And because we had a revision to the agenda, item H as well, Councilor.
And item H.
Councilors, you heard the motion to receive. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Councilor Greville.
Yeah, I'd suggest that, you know, since we're going through these, we can do the official motion at the end. But why don't we move to approve the presentation as presented by the mayor and the city solicitor, I mean, the city, excuse me, city solicitors.
I didn't go to law school.
And the director, and the Director of Finance on their motion.
Councilors, you heard the motion? Councilor Manning-Martin, do you have a?
Yes, I am questioning what the motion is.
It's basically just to accept the presentation, is the initial motion.
I accept that.
Councilors, you heard the motion to accept the presentation. Roll call.
Councilor Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Greville.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries tentative.
I'd like to make a motion to, to, to accept the chapter one-twenty-six of the Acts of nineteen eighty-eight, optional additional real estate exemptions effective for fiscal two seventy, two thousand seventeen tax bills.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Councilor Manning-Martin.
Yes, if we could have Mr. Gingrich explain what chapter one-twenty-six of the Acts of nineteen eighty-eight are for the folks at home, so they can know what we're voting on.
Good evening, Council. This is for the adoption to increase the exemption amounts up to forty percent, which we have done for the past number of years, at least ten years or so. There are statutory exemption amounts for veterans legally blind, elderly with limited income and assets. And this allows us to increase those amounts by this vote.
Thank you very much.
Roll call.
Councilor Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Greville.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries tentative.
Item C. Mr. Gingrich.
So requested transfer from unreserved fund balance, one point five million dollars to the operating budget tax levy, one point five million dollars to fund the tax rate.
Councilor Greville.
Yeah, I'd like to move to transfer one, one million five hundred thousand dollars from unreserved fund one hundred thirty-five nine oh one to FY seventeen operating budget tax levy, one hundred thirty-nine two oh one, in the same amount. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Councilor Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Greville.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries tentative.
Item D. Mr. Gingrich.
This is a request to transfer from our capital unrestricted account, five hundred thousand dollars to the, reduce the tax rate for the purpose of offsetting the debt service.
You didn't think I'd remember all that, did you?
Councilor Greville.
I'd like to move to, to transfer from the CIP unrestricted account, three hundred thirty-five nine oh one, the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to the FY two thousand, two thousand seventeen operating budget tax levy, account one hundred three-nine three oh one, in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Councilor Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Greville.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries tentative.
Item E. Mr. Gingrich.
So request to transfer fifty-eight thousand two hundred dollars from the parking meter fund to fund the parking meter budget.
Councilor Greville.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to transfer the amount of fifty-eight thousand two hundred dollars from the parking meter, meter revenue fund, two seventy-four zeros, thirty-three double oh one, to FY two thousand sixteen budget, one hundred four zeros, thirty-nine two oh one, in the same amount. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Councilor Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Greville.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries tentative.
Item F. Councilor Greville.
So, yes, I, item F is, every year we're required to balance.
I'm sorry, I, Mr. Gingrich.
I was gonna give you an explanation, but that's okay.
I, we'll go to the, the other expert.
Normally, we come with these votes a little bit earlier, but they're needed for part of the tax recap. And this is administrative costs for the CPC committee. And it's a transfer from unreserved fund balance, CPA of ten thousand, to the CPA administrative fund balance of ten thousand.
Councilor Greville.
Yes, I'd like to move the transfer of ten thousand dollars from two-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero thirty-three zero-one-one, the Community Preservation Act, unreserved fund balance, to two-seven-zero-eighteen-eleven, in the amount of ten thousand dollars. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Councilor Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Greville.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries tentative.
Item G. Mr. Gingrich.
Another community preservation reservation, statutory reservation of ten percent. It's a transfer for two hundred and eighty-eight thousand from unreserved community preservation funds to historical preservation, ninety-six thousand one oh two, community housing, ninety-six thousand one oh two, and open space, ninety-six thousand one oh two.
Councilor Greville.
Move to transfer two hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and six dollars from community preservation funds, unreserved, account number two-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero thirty-three zero-one-one, to historical preservation reserve fund, community housing reserve fund, open space reserve fund, in the amount of two-eight-eight-three-zero-six, spreading it amongst the accounts, two-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero, three, thirty-three zero-two-two, in the amount of ninety-six thousand one hundred and two dollars, two-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero thirty-three zero-two-three, in the amount of ninety-six one hundred and two dollars, and two-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero, thirty-three oh twenty-one, in the amount of ninety-six thousand one hundred and two dollars. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call. Councilor Manning-Martin.
Yes, if I could, through you to the mayor, the, under G, with the motion that's on the floor, there's a, a letter in here from you to the council for a hundred and sixty thousand from CPC open space for Crystal Lake, and then eighty thousand for CPC open space for the turf field. Is that memo falling under this motion?
No, that was, that was the subject of the correction on the agenda, so that's gonna be item H, Councilor.
Okay, oh, is item H falling under this motion?
It is not.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilor Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Greville.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries tentative.
The Community Preservation Committee's asked for an addition, an additional reservation of a hundred and forty-four thousand one fifty-two, ninety-six thousand one oh two for open space, twenty-four thousand twenty-five dollars for historic preservation, and twenty-four thousand twenty-five dollars for community housing.
Councilor Greville.
Like to move one hundred, to transfer one hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars from the Community Preservation Fund, unreserved, account number two-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero, thirty-three zero-one-one, to the following accounts, two-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero thirty-three zero-twenty-one, open space reserve fund, in the amount of ninety-six thousand one hundred and two dollars. Two-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero, thirty-three zero-two-two, historic preservation reserve fund, twenty-four thousand twenty-five dollars. And finally, two-seven-zero-zero-zero-zero thirty-three zero-two-three, in the amount of, for community housing reserve fund, in the amount of twenty-four thousand zero-twenty-five, for a total transfer of a hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Councilor Mitsoulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Greville.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries tentative.
And now, item H. Mr. Gingrich.
All right, this is the final transfer request. It's the fourth out of the fifth year of debt service payments provided by the CPC for these projects. And it's a transfer from unreserved fund balance, CPC two hundred and forty thousand, to open space Crystal Lake, and open space turf field.
Councilor Greville. Councilor Manning-Martin.
Thank you. Through you to the mayor on the, on that item. Could, it says that there's a fourth pay, fourth of five payments. Is that for both the Crystal Lake project and the turf field at the high school?
That's correct. Yes, Counselor, it was, the vote that I sought back three years ago from the CPC and then approved by the council was to obtain eight hundred thousand dollars from CPC funds payable in five annual installments of a hundred and sixty thousand to go towards Crystal Lake. And then, yes, it was the four hundred thousand for the Puyde High School turf field athletic improvements, again, to be paid in five annual installments. So the total was four hundred thousand for the turf field and athletic improvements, eight hundred thousand for Crystal Lake. And I think there's one more payment next year.
Okay, thank you. And I got a little rusty with the CPC or CPA requirements for open space. So, and then I researched that, and then the athletic fields or playgrounds and things like that is covered under open space. It just doesn't sound like it should be covered under it. So, it is covered. So, the question I guess I have at this point is, we approved through the Community Preservation Act funds to fund the turf field for four hundred thousand dollars. At what point, if at all, would the maintenance of that field then go on the school department's maintenance budget as opposed to being funded through that vote through the Community Preservation Act?
Yep, good question. And thankfully, because at, at first, the CPC, CPA, Community Preservation Act didn't allow for park improvements. And there was really a much narrower, you know, set of circumstances in order to spend money. It had to be only for open space. And thankfully, over time, because I think a number of communities were reaching out requesting to be able to use that money for park improvements. So thankfully, we've been able to take advantage of that. Most recently, there's been some, some of that CPC money used for some of the improvements at Magatha Park, Lake Shore, Farnham. And I think next year, we're gonna be moving forward with Lolico's Park, and, as well as some others. But thankfully, they were, we were allowed to do that. In terms of maintenance, there has been some investment by, that was in our, the budget for, our school budget, to buy some equipment in order to maintain the turf field. There was a, kind of like a, a small plow that also is a way to line the field. And that's something that we purchased in the budget for maintenance in the future. I anticipate there will be times to go, where we go back to CPC for smaller amounts of money, much smaller amounts of money, for maintenance for Crystal Lake, for maintenance for the turf fields, as issues come up. Turf field has about a ten-year life cycle. You know, we're in year two, three. And so, you know, we're gonna have to be cognizant of that. It won't be the cost it was this time for the turf field, because we already have the setup. It would just be the cost of the field. All the work, the, the groundwork has already been completed. We won't have to do that again. But we would have to get new turf, which is about, I believe, some, right now, the market is around four hundred thousand for a new turf field. But I do anticipate that CPC would be there, and it might be something we go for, some maintenance costs in the future. So long-winded answer, I'm sorry, Councilor.
No, no, that's a very good answer. I just wanted to, to put that out there for food for thought, because since the state funding, state matching is going down, that I wouldn't want, I'd like to have discussion, at least to have that on the table, that it's a very expensive endeavor, four, four hundred thousand dollars for that turf field. And with the state funding, the matching going down, I just want people to be to be cognizant that we don't want that, that large ticket item to eat up any of the other funds that might be able, the rest of the city might be able to benefit from, whether it's historic, or affordable housing, or open space elsewhere throughout the city. So I just wanted to put that in the forefront of everyone's mind, that, that at some point, I think the school department maintenance budget should be picking up a lot of the maintenance fees for that, that item. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Manning-Martin. Councilor Gould.
If I could, please, thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Manning, on a number of the projects, as a member of the CPC, we made sure that the applicant who we were giving the money to has a maintenance program set up and in place. We tied in with Mr. Healy on any facility improvements we made this past year, and he has a maintenance program that he's putting in place, as the mayor directed about the turf field in particular, but every applicant, we made sure they had a maintenance plan, that they themselves would fund and run, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Grevell.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to transfer $240,000 from account number 270-000-33011, CPC unreserved fund balance, to account number 270-000-33021, CPC open space, Crystal Lake, in the amount of $160,000, and account number 270-000-33021, CPC open space, PV MHS Athletic Complex, in the amount of $80,000, so moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion.
I think you missed a zero, Counsel.
You heard the motion. Roll call.
What, right?
Counselors Metzulis. Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes, thank you.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Grevell.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to nothing.
Councilor Grevell.
Yes, I'd also like to vote to approve the following tax classification, a vote to adopt the residential factor of .813240 for fiscal 2017, which is a 168% CIP, resulting in a residential tax rate of $11.76, and a commercial CIP tax rate of $24.29, so moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Counselors Metzulis.
Yes.
Walsh.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
No.
Charis.
Yes.
Sasslaw.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Grevell.
Yes.
Garabedian.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to one, one absent.
Councilor Grevell.
Like to move to not grant a discount for open space.
Councilors, you heard the motion. Roll call.
Counselors Metzulis.